Four at seven o'clock P M. Item number two is discussion of possible action on tonight's agenda. Any comments about tonight's agenda, any changes?
The two buses.
What's that?
I said the two buses that we're gonna be making a motion on tonight, wasn't that already in the budget or is this two additional?
It's uh, it's not additional, it was in the budget. But uh, Mr. Detwell, our transportation director's here to discuss it when we get there, if you're interested.
So we have a motion and a second for accepting the agenda? Motion's been made by Carla and seconded by Barbara, is there any further discussion inside them? If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes.
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 Motion carries five to zero. Item number three is pledge allegiance and silent devotion. At this time, join me for just a few minutes of uh, uh, silent devotion. Thank you. Item number four, discussion and possible action on appointing board chair for two thousand twenty-four.
I make a motion, appoint Barbara Razor to the chair.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Eric and seconded by Carla, is there any further discussion inside them? If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
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 Yes. All those opposed, please signify by saying no. Motion carries five to zero. This time, we'll change chairs.
I'll just find your.
Item number five, discussion and possible action on appointing board vice chair for two thousand twenty-four.
I make a motion to appoint Brenda Holder as vice chair for two thousand twenty-four.
Do I have a second? Any other nominations?
I make a motion for Carla Bowling, vice chair.
Okay, we have two nominations, uh, for vice chair, Brenda Holder. And uh, Carla, Carla Bowling, so I guess at this time, we need to vote.
I'll second. Another need a second.
Okay, do I have a second on those two nominations?
I'll second either one of them.
So, we have a, a motion for Carla Bowling to be vice chair, do I have a second on that motion? Seconded by Eric.
Well, I think the motion.
You make the motion.
Either.
I'll second for Carla. All in favor of Carla being vice chair for two thousand twenty-four, signify by saying yes.
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 All opposed? Discussion and possible action on appointing boards, board secretary for two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion for Mr. Evans to be the secretary.
I have a motion for Mr. Evans to be secretary, do I have a second? Seconded by Carla, all in favor, those, uh, Mr. Evans being board secretary, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Discussion and possible action on appointing board treasurer for two thousand twenty-four.
Make a motion for Brittany Combs as treasurer.
I'll second. I have a motion for Brittany Combs to be, uh, board treasurer, two thousand twenty-four, uh, by Eric, seconded by Barbara, all in favor of Brittany being board secretary for two thousand twenty-four, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Item number eight, board appreciation proclamation. I think we have Pastor Lo Rice.
This is school board appreciation month. And I have before me a proclamation that I share with you at this time. Whereas our community values a quality education as a vital step along the pathway to success for our children. And whereas John Steele, Brenda Holder, Eric Conkright, Barbara Razor, and Carla Bowling contribute greatly to this community through their service on the Bath County Board of Education. And whereas these decision makers are responsible for maintaining strong, effective budgetary oversight, high standards for employment, and a safe, well-managed set of school facilities. And whereas these board members are serving community with integrity, honor, and a commitment to our children's futures. And whereas January the twenty-fourth marks Kentucky's observation of their contributions through school board recognition month. Therefore, I Lo Rice, pastor of the Owensville First Church of God, and on behalf of a grateful community, do hereby proclaim the month of January two thousand twenty-four throughout this community as school board recognition month. And urge all citizens to join and honor John Steele, Brenda Holder, Eric Conkright, Barbara Razor, and Carla Bowling for their service.
Thank you Pastor Rice. Item number nine, item number nine, student spotlight Bath County High School.
Good evening, you guys. Over the past year, our career and technical education program has grown tremendously here at Bath County High School. At the high school level, we have added aviation, an additional agriculture teacher, pre-law with, which has mock trial team, and Wild Eats. Tonight, I'm presenting to you guys Wild Eats, this is our new school-based entrepreneurship, it's a restaurant. We have had our first service for our school so far. And there's a lot of exciting things coming up here in February that you're all gonna learn about tonight. This Friday will be our second service, they're gonna have a taco bar this Friday for all the teachers in the building if they signed up to eat it. Sorry, they told me it was Wednesday, not Friday, I messed up on the date. Um, Ms. Leanne Ramey. She is our culinary teacher, she manages our students with our restaurant here. And tonight, my culinary students, they will be presenting to you Wild Eats.
Hi, my name's Savannah Deal and I'm one of the managers of the restaurants. Um, first, I wanna thank you guys for giving us this opportunity, we are all very honored to be here, and I'll let my fellow members introduce themselves.
I'm Addie St. John.
I'm Aleah Lathery.
I'm Gracie Harden.
I'm Logan Haly.
I'm Dawson Church.
I'm Brad Barnett.
I'm Savannah Curtis.
I'm Jasmine Toledo.
I'm Ethan Sumter, the other manager.
Um, we are a student-run restaurant, um, with Ms. Ramey as our supervisor. We are open one day a week and like, um, Ms. Brandonberg said, uh, we'll have a service, uh, this Wednesday and it will usually be on Wednesdays. Um, us students get to decide the menu. Um, orders are taken through a Google form that is sent out the week before. Um, the restaurant is by the front office in B C H S, and you can choose dine-in or takeout. Some past projects that we've done is the college and career fair, we've partnered with the youth service center in Gear Up, the vendor fair at B C H S, the legislative breakfast at the Ag Center, partnered with, uh, Vicky Wells. Our first service in the restaurant, we made baked spaghetti, salad, and garlic knots. Um, catered the Crossroads Elementary Christmas Party. Some future projects we have, um, we're gonna be working with, uh, the Unite Reception in March, thank you to the youth service center. Our second service is going to be the taco bar this week. Our grand opening and ribbon cutting is going to be in early February. Um, open, open Wild Eats restaurant to all district employees in February, and open Wild Eats restaurant to the public in late February. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you guys, and I have some certificates for our students to hand out to them in appreciation for what they're doing for our school. Jasmine Toledo. Savannah Deal. Savannah Curtis. Addie St. John. Ethan Sumter. Dawson Church. Gracie Harden. Logan Haly. Braden Barnett. Aleah Lathery. And we have some students that can't be here with us tonight, Lily Crouch, J R Junior McCoy, and Chloe Heath, so they can't be here with us tonight. Thank you guys, and I hope you all enjoy your little treat that's from Wild Eats.
Thank you guys. Item number ten, superintendent and board communications.
Uh, one of the things, uh, tonight, because of the length of the, uh, agenda, my communication will be very short, but I do wanna point out there that superintendent and board communication, only in the sense that I did watch, uh, a board meeting from another district. And they take that time as well, if the board themselves wish to speak on anything, so I'm just extending next month that, uh, opportunity to everyone as well here on the board if you want to speak during the, uh, communication. Uh, but for this month, I just really, it is board appreciation month, I thank, uh, Brother Rice for coming out and doing the proclamation, and I just wanna say how thankful I am to work with such a good group of people, care greatly about kids in, in this district, and it's just an honor to be here and, and be a part of the, the process. Also wanna thank our wonderful staff and our employees across the board, we have good people in Bath County, and it's a great place to be and, and live and work. Uh, so that's all I have this evening for communication.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Item eleven, discussion and possible action approving the following items. A, December fourteenth, twenty-three minutes. B, December financial statement. C, claims. D, superintendent expenditures. E, travel. F, use of facility. G, review of all monthly financial reports of all funds. H, pay bills through January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I, approval for board members to attend conferences and meetings to obtain required hours for the full calendar year of two thousand twenty-four. J, synergy test and balance invoice of one thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents. K, acceptance of offer of assistance from the school facilities construction commission in the amount of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-two cents. L, discussion and possible action to approve the M O A with E K U to allow students, student teachers to be placed in Bath County schools. M, discussion and possible action to approve the request to publish R F P for U P S replacements. N, discussion and possible action on approving the request to apply for the fiscal year twenty-four preschool quality partnership grant. O, discussion and possible action on approving Bath County School District Assurance Certification fiscal years twenty-four through twenty-six. P, discussion and possible action to approve the frisky contracts for twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six. Q, E M twenty-four fire alarm monitoring agreement for P K thirteen twenty-three Bath County High School L A V E C. Any discussion or?
I need a motion.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve items eleven A through eleven Q.
Second.
Have a motion by Brenda to approve items eleven A through eleven Q, seconded by Eric, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed?
Yes, I vote.
Item twelve, public comments. None. Item thirteen, discussion and possible action to approve Tim Bailey's track sign.
At this time, Mr. Thompson's gonna come forward with the presentation.
Good afternoon, evening. Uh, in front of you on the desk there in front of Mr. Evans is a, uh, three D plaque. Um, I don't really know what to call it, but that's kinda the direction I was leaning, uh, towards. It would be constructed out of, uh, steel columns on each side, across the top and bottom, and then in the center would be a, uh, L E D panel, uh, inserted. That's kinda, you know, what, what I took away from our, our last meeting, what we wanted to go with. Uh, it can be a single-side L E D, uh, panel or a dual on that. Uh, the electric would come from probably one of the existing light poles that are out there now. On that, and the cost on that, uh, can vary. Uh, I figured for a three-by-six sign, I can get a, uh, smaller one, the three-by-six sign for a dual side, probably gonna be around twenty-four thousand dollars just for the equipment. Uh, and then the single side would be around fourteen, uh, maybe fourteen-five, something like that. Um, the frame and all that will be building in-house, and I don't, I don't think we'll have over twenty-five hundred dollars in that as well. There is many, many directions that you can go with this. Uh, I have all kinds of, of things that you can look at in my folder, far as masonry work, uh, brick, rock, stone. Uh, you can, if you wanna get away from the L E D sign, we can do that as well and bring the cost down significantly. I really don't know, didn't know how to pin down exactly what we wanted. That's what I wanted to do whenever it was first mentioned to me on L E D signs. And the, the little, uh, track figures on top would be cut out of steel and then powder coated as well, the whole frame will be. I can't give you an exact cost at this time, but that's kinda the way I'm going.
One of the things, uh, Mr. Thompson and I discussed, so you have the L E D, and then the other one's called a monument sign, so that's, it could be a brick base or a faux rock base, and then it kinda has like a, a slate rock that could say Tim Bailey Track or whatever you want on it. And so that's a, that's an option. And then those options can go all the way down to, you know, two four-by-four posts with plywood, uh, we would ask stay away from that because of the, uh, the way it looks. There's a couple of signs out there right now that are, are posted by the track like that. They're good for saying, you know, uh, soccer game, so, season's coming or something like that, but, uh, if you're going to put something up to honor someone, I, I think a little, I would request a little more.
On that, on the one that you have in front of you, uh, on the bottom of it, it will have a plaque, a lot, a lot like what we have on our, uh, dedication plaques. Anytime that we do a project, there will be a, a bronze, uh, cast plaque on the bottom of it that says in honor of Coach Tim Bailey for years of service and dedication to our community, uh, on that. And I can do the same thing with the, uh, you know, the faux stone or brick or the stucco, uh, platforms. And then we can also do, uh, you know, just a plain L E D sign with post in the middle, and then a larger, uh, billboard sign above that that says that in honor of Coach Tim Bailey, uh, as well. And, and with the little running, uh, figures in that, I, I think that, that, I kinda like that where he, he runs con, across the country, that's what he's known for. Um, so if we can incorporate that somehow. I personally like the one you have, I think it'll look, it'll be pretty cost-effective, every, it'll be done in-house. Uh, the, uh, the sign that I wanna go with is called, uh, Impact LEDs, and it got all kinds of stuff. They are made in, here in Kentucky. They're, they are about three or four major players in L E D sign business, and, uh, they stretch from across the United States. This one here is a local company, it's in Shelbyville. Uh, I believe that's where they tell me, but they, uh, they will, they will bring a truck out and display their work. They have a mobile truck that you can see their signs in action. Uh, you know, it's built here, I, I just immediately, soon as they said that, and it's cheaper than the other two. You have, uh, this is called Impact LED, then you have Watchfar, uh, L E D, and then you have Doctronics, which is, I think Doctronics is, uh, pretty much got all Clark County's business, and that was kinda the way I was going. Until, you know, I, I kinda looked, I think they're made in South Dakota, it, you know, so, I, and then when I come across this company here, and they're, they're hitting it hard, and they've got really good service, and they were cheaper, so, kinda went that way.
So when you, you were talking about the, the faux brick and, or that kinda stuff, that would be more expensive, right?
Uh, no, if we get away from, if you're talking about getting away from L E D, uh, then it would be something like some of these, and you can look through them. Uh, you probably would be, uh, way, way south of, uh, ten thousand dollars on that. Uh, if you stick with the L E D as far as raising the prices, uh, you'll, you'll, it'd probably be around twenty-five thousand dollars. It does not include the, uh, the plaque on the bottom if we go with the bronze one, like what I thought. We could do it in, in, in raised lettering or something like that, be a lot, probably a lot cheaper on it.
So total cost, you think it would probably be close to thirty thousand?
Yeah, probably so.
For all of it?
Probably so, yeah.
To go that way?
But you're talking, but that's with two LEDs.
The doubles, the double-side L E D, right?
No, with the, uh, with the, uh, faux brick or stone, uh, single-side impact L E D, it's gonna be around twenty-four thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, single-sided on that. If we go with the single-sided, just single poles, you know, pretty much just the L E D sign, gonna be around fourteen thousand sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for just the material on that. That does not include the, uh, monument plaque underneath of it. And the reason why is we don't know the exact size yet to make it.
Just so we can clear, Mr. Thompson, if I spend a lot of time, so sometimes when you know what you're talking about, uh, you don't share it so everybody understands. So I think there might be a little confusion up here, you correct me if I'm wrong. The first one, the example, he's using, Mr. Thompson's gonna make the frame himself out of metal.
Yeah.
Then they'll inset the L E D, on top of the metal frame would be the, the, the kids running, if you look at that, that's really neat. And then at the bottom would be a, uh, this is the Tim Bailey Track. The L E D screen can say whatever, you know, here's the football schedule, softball schedule, here's the lunch menu, it could even pop up and say Tim Bailey Track, and in the future, we named the field after somebody, it could say that. So that's when, just that was about fourteen thousand one way. And then the monuments, what we're talking about was, we build up from the ground some block, put faux brick on it, and it, there's no L E D in that one, that'd be well under ten thousand.
Pretty close, on that one, on that one right there that you have in front of you, the, the sign is gonna be, you know, about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. Then the work that I have to do on it will be an additional cost as far as making the, that. And I, I think will be less than three thousand dollars on that, you know. So you'll probably be more like twenty thousand dollars when it's all said and done for that one.
I, just speaking for myself, I, I think I want to think more on it as to, before we spend twenty or thirty thousand dollars for a sign, I don't know how anybody else feels.
Well, we have been in discussion for several months about this. It's, I mean, it's, no, it's new to you, but it's not new to the board. I want to know as far as your recommendation on the single side or double side LED, which would be better for us? Because I, I want to look at what's better for our community to have access to the sign and the information.
I think you need to ask yourself on what it's gonna be used for, and the people that are working at the high school and on the, with athletics. You know, they're the ones, it, it, you program it via your cell phone, your cell phone, you'll, you'll have an app basically on it. So if you want to see it from both sides, there are so many things that you can talk about on it. We're, we're gonna be getting the, what they call the, the very small LEDs that, that looks more like a video than anything. And it's more visual as walking in. It's not made to see from, you know, the interstate. It's made to see when they get out of their car and, and approach the field, any kind of advertisement or announcements that you want to make on that. And it'll, it'll be legible as they drive down the road as well, but that, it's more for entry purposes. On that, as far as dual side, if you have a dual side, then obviously your people on your field are gonna be able to see whatever. Now, I, me and Mr. Evans talked about whether or not that was gonna be distracting to the players. We don't think it is because of, you know, they have some pretty elaborate scoreboards throughout the state that, that do the same thing on that.
But is it worth ten thousand dollars to have that extra side?
Uh, yes. There are obviously a, a whole lot more information that we need to get together before we have an exact cost on that. Number one, because I don't, you know, I was kind of left alone to pick out what to, to do, and up there is what I want to do. But I've got a whole folder of possibilities here that everyone that can look at. Once we have a definite direction, then I can give you a, a more accurate price.
One thing I was thinking, Brenda, was, and I, I guess I probably disagree with Tim a little bit. I'm thinking more of the one side facing the parking lot, just because the backside, you know, it is another ten thousand dollars. But I can see where it would be distracting to the people and the fan, you know, the fans in the stands. Because a lot of times those LEDs really can, can really get bright.
Right, if there's motion.
Right, right. And, you know, a ref could call something, or they could, you know, ask for it to be turned off in a, in a game, you know, for, because they'll, they'll, they'll make you turn the headlights off in the parking lot. So what wouldn't make them, make you turn this sign off? So I can see a problem with that. But that's, that's the only thought I had, was that just maybe the one side with, you know, some type of, you know, stone around it, holding it up. This, Tim, this would be like the size of the entire sign, right? This is just a small mock-up, right?
Yes, yes. What that is there is we have a student that spends a lot of time in the bus garage, and she does that three D printing. And she's all the time doing projects in the, in the bus garage for school or for fun or whatever. And I, I actually, I asked her if she could do that, and she, I've got the drawing there. She drawled it all up on her computer and so on and so forth, and then printed that out. She actually did it twice. We, we misspelled, I misspelled Bailey, and Mr. Evans called it. We had to do it all over again. But her name is Destiny Anderson, I believe, is that correct? Yes, Destiny Anderson. She's the daughter of Chris and Alicia Anderson that work at the bus garage. You know, she's really good at that. So I just, you know, just really liked what she was doing and, and asked her to get involved.
I agree with John on that. One side, the single side is the direction, but...
That, that, the sign there is gonna be the simplest and the least expensive. Now, some of the masonry signs, you know, a lot of that, other than the brick, I can do myself. You know, the stone, if you pick something like that, it would just be a fake precast stone of some sort on that. It would be pretty inexpensive as well. You know, when I say inexpensive, inexpensive, somewhere around twenty thousand dollars for a single sided sign.
So do I have a motion from anyone on what sign they want to go with?
Yeah, I'll make a motion on the single sided three by six Impact LED message center with a stone design that Tim Thompson can come up with to encase it in.
I'll second.
So I have a motion?
I'll second.
I have a second by Eric too.
Oh, I'm sorry. And let her second.
Um...
I can't hear Eric.
So I have a motion to approve the one sided LED sign with stonework by John and second by Eric. All, uh, all in favor signify by saying yes.
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 All, uh, all opposed, no?
Okay.
So I guess you just have to get to work on that, Tim?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Do we have a, do we have a cap? Do we have a budget cap on that?
What, did you say that would probably run around, uh...
I'd like to have twenty thousand dollars to work with.
That's...
I, I've got to think about my, my, my conduct and, you know, everything underground.
Do you, do you want to work up a cost and then come back and let us know what the cost will be?
I can do that as well. I would like to, you know, if you're, if you're giving me a choice, I'd like, I'd like a commitment, and I like that way I can get it built.
I think by the motion, you had the commitment.
I make a motion to give Mr. Thompson a twenty thousand dollar maximum on this project.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by John to, um, to give you twenty thousand dollars to, to work on this sign. It was second by Brenda. All in favor signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Signify by saying no.
Alrighty, we'll get to work. Thank you.
And this will include the, the plaque with the runners and the statement about Mr. Bailey then?
Yes.
Like that? Okay. That's all we'll have to know.
Item number fourteen, discussion and possible action on approving the change order proposal for PR twelve gym lobby roof parapet replacement.
Mr. David Rhodes from Pax Walker and Mr. Jonathan Ruiz from RTA will present.
Good evening. Just wanted to pass out a couple slides there, just to let you see what's going on there. First one's the media center. I think it's the order, I'm sure, but see the media, the media center, that area is pretty well complete, but you can see some of the progress. You see the demolition and then start to go back with the new, once the HVAC is completed, go back with the new tile, the new lights, new signaling tile and lights. And it's starting to take shape. I think we're about ready to move in. I think Mr. Thompson's doing a final cleanup on some items. We've completed a cleanup and maybe Wednesday you may have access to it. Yeah, I think that's sort of the goal. And, and then the next photo, it shows a hallway, that's, that's a area C, that's a phase, phase one and phase eight. So again, you sort of see the demolition and then house coming back together. With the, once the HVAC, HVAC far sprinkler system is installed and the, then the lights. And then you see what is currently the entrance. You can see the main entrance, I guess, well, one main, one of your main entrances. See the new lights going in. And speaking of that entrance, as you know, we're taking estimates, we're trying to get quotes on replacing that entrance, taking off that canopy and removing the glass and going back with some metal wall panel system. So hopefully we'll have those numbers for you in February and anticipate that work taking place during the summer. As far as overall construction, we feel like we're probably, you know, we're maybe a couple of weeks behind on the high school and probably, probably a couple of weeks ahead in the, on the Leveque, on the Cheneau facility. We think a couple of weeks we'll have those restrooms in operation. And I think starting to move furniture and so forth in those classrooms as well, and that horticulture area and the vocational area will start tomorrow. So hopefully we'll be able to turn those classrooms over and, and then we'll, once the media center and all that, we get that switched, then we'll be able to start on phase three of the high school. You'll start seeing, again, going through another demolition phase, a new HVAC. Just, it's just a repeat from one section to the other, and that's, that's what we'll be doing. And trying to work with the staff at high school. I hope our, I, I think our team is communicating with your staff, and I, I think it's going quite well. I know there's some, every now and then, you know, with someone will prop a door open, we, we try to make sure that doesn't happen. But on occasion, that, unfortunately, that happens from time to time. But hopefully our contractors getting better and see the importance of that, you know, we got to keep these facilities closed during, during working hours. We'll be doing some work after hours on the demolition when we start this next phase. So you'll probably see some work going up till the midnight hour at times. So certainly entertain any questions. I know we got some change orders we're gonna present to you as well. Jonathan will be doing that.
David, I've got a question. So in the Cheneau building, as far as the building goes, with the exception of the bathrooms, it's pretty much ready for moving in, is that what you're saying?
Uh, yes, we're gonna start moving in, start moving some furniture in tomorrow.
Tomorrow? So then you think they'll be able to have classes in there when?
Well, we're waiting on the, the restrooms, waiting on some toilet partitions. There, that, we had a delay there. We had some deficient or some, some of the, the partitions did not, they were warped, I think that's what it was. And so those had to be reordered. And so they're supposed to be in this week, so I'm anticipating next week we should have all that in place.
Okay. So we're, my understanding is we won't move any classes in there until the bathrooms are ready, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, right.
Okay, perfect.
Jonathan's gonna present change orders?
Yes. So to the agenda item for number fourteen, PR twelve, for context, it's the gym main entry lobby, the one that you come from the parking lot into, that lower roof. The original design intent was to re-roof that parapet or that roof area and to have it go into the existing block or stone capping that's on there. Turns out when they were trying to do that, a lot of the, the stone caps themselves were not securely fastened to the actual roof parapet. So they brought it to our attention saying like, what do you want to do about it? The first way we were trying to go, to get a price was go back with some extra dowels and epoxy and really just, really secure the actual stone capping back to where it was. We didn't think it would be that much. Turns out it was about seventy thousand dollars just for that hundred and sixty foot perimeter. So I think the roofer came to David and was like, what if we do a metal kind of cap similar to what you're doing on the actual gym? In your mind, don't think about the actual metal panel that's on the gym, high volume, just think about the metal cap that's on the very top perimeter of the roof. We looked at that price option, that price came in a lot better at half the price of thirty-three seven and some change. So the change order in front of you is for that thirty-three seven, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and I think forty-six dollars to allow for the lower lobby roof parapet section to get recapped, when initially it wasn't gonna get recapped. And that was the only way they could actually complete the installation of the re-roof. Otherwise, you would have your brand new roof and it wouldn't be tucked, flashed into the actual cap, thus it's just flapping in the wind. So it's a necessary thing to get done for you actually to complete that re-roof as a whole. It's just unfortunate that the best way that they could secure the roofing on along the perimeter was not to reuse the stone capping that was there, but instead get rid of it and do a metal cap, which is a newer product, it's better, but ultimately it was not foreseen because they thought, we thought you could just tuck it in to existing and call it a day. Oh, yeah, sorry. And it's a warranty issue at that matter as well. I know there's a lot of technical speak, all to say it's required because if not, your perimeter of your roof will just flail in the wind. And we tried to do another option, but that option was double the price than you're seeing now.
And you said thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars, is that what you said?
I think I'm paraphrasing. It's, I know it's thirty-three... Ah, my bad. Thirty-three, seven, seventy-two and five cents. My mistake.
Those, those stones, are they original, and you may not be able to answer, are they original to the building?
Yes. Along the perimeter of the gym and your original two classroom wings.
In the alternate detail, that's what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, so it's a really simple diagram, but yes. Where you would take off the, the stone, you put a wood nailer base down, you would tuck your roofing underneath, or I'm sorry, on top of that wood plate, and then you would cap it with the actual metal coping. So it's a very similar detail to what you're having on the taller roof itself. That is just a roofer's sketch, what they were gonna provide, which is the exact same thing we have at the taller roof of the gym.
So do I have a motion on approval of the change order for the PR twelve gym lobby roof parapet replacement in the amount of seven, or thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
So I have a motion by Carla, second by John, all in favor of this approval of the change order? Signify by...
Can we have a little bit more discussion?
Sure.
I just want to make sure, by doing this, the roof warranty is covered, right?
Yes, so we ran it by the roofer, whoever, the roofer brought it to us, making sure that this is a solution that does maintain the warranty of your new roof that goes on that area of the building. So yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion? So I have a motion by Carla, second by John, all in favor of the change order, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item fifteen, discussion and possible action... Item fifteen, discussion and possible action on approving the change order proposal, PR fourteen, ceiling replacement credit.
So for this one, it was brought to our attention that there were two rooms, second floor, near the library, that didn't have ceilings and they didn't need ceilings in general. So our documents showed an assumption that there were ceilings in there, there's not, clearly there's none, there's no demo cost, and there's no new ceiling cost. So with that, the contractor priced out what they put in their bid for those two small rooms. I believe they're like an electrical closet and maybe it's the mechanical room on the second floor. Either way, this was the thousand dollar, one thousand fifty-seven eighty cents that they put in their bid to address those two small rooms that don't need ceilings at all.
So a motion to approve the change order proposal, PR fourteen, ceiling replacement credit in the amount of one thousand fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents.
I'll make that motion to approve it.
A second.
So I have a motion by Carla to approve the change order, PR fourteen, and second by John.
Little more, little more discussion.
More discussion?
Tim, have you looked at this area and everything, you're good with what? Okay, no more discussion.
Any more discussion? So the motion by Carla, second by John, all in favor of the change order proposal, PR fourteen, signified by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixteen, discussion and possible action on approving the change order proposal, PR zero four, overhead cooling door electrical modification, two options.
So the origin of this conflict was, in the Cheneau building, there are a total, I believe, of four overhead doors that are getting replaced. What was specified was a motor that worked with like a one-twenty volt system for the building. That's not what the building has. So the only way to rectify it is we change the motor for the overhead doors to work with the building. Or they order the overhead doors as they were specified, as they come in, and the electrician does a little modification by adding, I think, a panel breaker and doing some circuits to make the motors work with the rest of the building. Basically, your two options in terms of pricing are considering the building getting some electrical breaker modifications for additional fourteen hundred dollars, or having the building not get changed at all and having the manufacturer provide a different kind of motor that would work with the building. That approach would be an additional twenty-five fifty-three. The reason I want to give you both options is because there are some simplifications that are inherent with the overhead door just getting ordered and it takes care of the problem and you don't have to worry about anything. However, we recognize that the more economical or affordable option is the electrical or the electrician route of them making stuff work. There's, the only caveat is that there's no guarantee that as soon as the electrician starts making stuff work, they come into another problem or another issue. They haven't indicated that they would, but my point is right now fourteen hundred dollars seems to be like the no-brainer option for a lower change. But they did mention like, oh, by the way, if you do that, you might have to consider adjusting the circuitry so that two doors are not on the same circuit as they are right now in the building. That's a little nuanced to say fourteen hundred dollars is just to get those doors to work, pending that they don't say, oh, do you want to have your doors wired differently so they're on their own breakers? Or do you want to correct this other issue that they discover once they actually do the work?
I have a question.
I'm sorry, good one.
Will you go first?
Tim, have you looked at this? What, what's your opinion on this?
You said fourteen hundred dollars? Okay, so that's the electrician option.
Well, how does that affect our warranty?
It doesn't. So we ran it by the overhead door manufacturer and we're like, this is our issue, how do you want to proceed for us doing this? And ultimately, the product itself, its warranty is good with its motor staying as is and gets ordered, nothing gets changed, or if they upgrade it to a different kind of motor. The warranty comes with whichever motor they order, so there's no change.
So in the end, the motor that's going to run the door is the original motor that came with the new door?
Correct, yes. And they have the option to get you the different motor that would work with the building. Long story short is the one that's currently being ordered is not compatible with the building without doing additional work for fourteen hundred dollars for the electrician.
Okay.
Is this option A? Is that what this is?
This would be the fourteen hundred dollar option.
I'm sorry, so option one would be changing the door intent to be twenty-five twenty, twenty-five fifty-three, option one, that's your door changing. Option two, fourteen hundred dollars, and that's the electrician making the building compatible.
Option two is the cheaper.
But my question's a little different. If, if we go with...
Yes, you are.
If we go with the electrical changes, does that have any detriment on the life of the motor or any of the use of the motor? It will still be the same expected life expectancy and everything as it would be?
Yes, yes. The main reason why the electrician would have to get involved is that the motor would just literally sit there and not be able to function for details. One-twenty volt motor, the building is two forty-three phase, so it's a totally different kind of electrical infrastructure. But the functionality, once the electrician does his work, does not change the warranty or lifespan or use of the motor, if anything, it just makes the motor work. And to clarify what Tim stated, yes, you do get a brand new opener, a new door, like everything's still new and there are no issues with warranty or the use of those products, it's just a preference on how would you want these doors to work? Is it changing the motors or having the building get a little, add a little bit of electrical work to adapt it to work with the current motors?
That's option two.
Option two, yes, for the electrician to get involved.
I'll make a motion to approve the change order proposal for PR zero four, overhead cooling door electrical modification, option two.
A second.
So I have a motion by Brenda for the, to, for the, I'm sorry. Motion by, motion to approve the change order proposal for PR oh four, overhead cooling door electrical modification, option two, by Brenda, second by John. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and possible action on approving a credit of three hundred and twenty-five dollars for change order two six oh dash zero one.
So full transparency, I didn't know the, the final price on that. I think that came through, was it maybe Bob?
It's three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay, cool. Long story short, the initial intent was to provide some welding booth curtains or rods and curtains just for visibility and protection. Then when we got confirmation that the district had already purchased their booths, those booths already came with new curtains and rods assemblies for those booths. All to say, three twenty-five is the credit for what the contractor was going to put in their estimate for providing, I think, a total of fourteen curtains, curtain assemblies for booths that the school's already providing with their own curtains. So just crediting back that money. Three twenty-five?
Three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Was it a higher number?
What, what was that, what was that for? That's, I'm like you, I didn't know that had been presented. I'm sorry. But, I mean, do y'all have a paper trail on, on this change order or not? I'm like Jonathan, I was not aware of that.
Just a second, I'll pull the attachment up for you. Well, the three hundred and twenty-five, here's how I get that. It's an AIA document. Says the original contract track sum, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand. The contract sum will be decreased by this change order in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five dollars. That's where that number came from. And then it...
What's the description? I'm sorry. Is there a description?
Oh, yeah, it says labor is the three hundred and twenty-five. There were two things submitted, Jonathan, and we removed one from the...
Yeah, so that was the one I was intending to remove, but then I heard the price of...
So, so what we've done is crossed, the three twenty-five you're talking about is actually something that we removed from the budget, from the agenda.
The change order six, two sixty dash zero one, I was intending for that to be removed from the agenda because we didn't have a price at that time when it was submitted for the agenda.
Would it be okay if we postponed item number seventeen until next month?
Right, but I'd like to know what that was labored for what though?
Then I'll make a motion to postpone item number seventeen until the February board meeting, until we have more information clarified.
Second.
So I have a motion by John to table item number seventeen, second by Eric. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries.
This has nothing to do with those curtains.
Gotcha, okay. We'll take, we'll...
Yeah, we'll take a look at it.
We'll get everything together for February.
Okay. Item eighteen, discussion and possible action on the approval of special inspections invoiced from L.E. Gregg for the Bath County High School Miscellaneous Renovations Project BG twenty-two dash three seven six.
So for this one, the invoices were three seventy-five, twenty-five. They made one visit early December for the high school project. This is the similar approval that the board gave of a limit not to exceed a certain amount and now they're just billing for each time they come on site.
I make a motion to approve the special inspections invoiced from L.E. Gregg for the Bath County High School Miscellaneous Renovations Project BG number twenty-two dash three seventy-six.
Second.
Motion to approve item eighteen, the special inspection invoiced from L.E. Gregg for the BCHS Miscellaneous Renovation Project BG twenty-two dash three seven six, second by Eric. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nineteen, presentation of RTA of the final renderings for the new Bath County Middle School.
It's right here in front of me, Mr. Rhodes.
So while Mr. Rhodes is coming around to give you all a closer look, I'll hold this up for the audience at the same time. And I'll give you like a brief intent for what you're seeing in each view and then we can talk about any things you have for questions. For this first one, let's go with the one you have in your hand. The exterior of a new Bath County Middle School. This is attempting to update the exterior look, so it looks like a new school, but it also tries to make it seem familiar to the original middle school. So the main architectural moves that we wanted to propose is that there's a addition to the main entry, which is the, in my mind, a limestone exterior wall, and that would ultimately become like your vestibule area, so that you have a more generous entry area. That is the main move. The, on the left and right, you have more extruded facades to allow the building to have a little more interest on the overall front of the building because right now it's a really flat exterior. And for the roof, it has to get a new roof on there, so we put a metal roof on there, but we wanted to keep the integrity of the cupola and the dormers up there on the roof line. Beyond that, just what you're seeing in the image is what we foresee what it would look like in the fall time as school starts to open up. The next render shows what a new interior lobby or main entry could look like. So the main thing I want to draw your attention to is that we felt that the current layout is a good way to start. So as you walk in, technically from this view, it's the right side of your image is the reception, but as you walk in, it's on the left. That would be nice, bright, open. As you look out to this lobby area, that's two stories. And the floor has more like a luxury vinyl plank or vinyl tile finish with a centerpiece that celebrates the former main entry of the building. So with that, if you can imagine, it takes your current main entry of your building from the inside. It makes it a display area for you to either put up awards, trophies, jerseys, or anything you want to celebrate for the community as it was the main entry at one point. And as people walk into the vestibule, that's what they'll see. And they'll come on to the left and right of that through those doors to enter their school. With that, I'll open it up for any comments or questions, but just wanted to show what we've come up with.
Mr. Reeves, I just want to say that as we work through this, me personally, I, I think it's beautiful. I think it, it does, I'm in no way an artist, but it keeps the familiarity of the current building and brings it into the modern air. It's just, I just love it. I know others may feel differently, but I think, I think it looks fantastic. The interior, exciting, you know, you can, even when we looked at it, you just feel the excitement that builds up and it's just something that, that the kids would be really excited about. The kids, these kids deserve something like this. It's just a, my, my two cents, it's just, it's wonderful all the way around. I appreciate the, the work you put into it.
Can I just add, while these are ultimately trying to excite the community just of what could be, when this project does take off, it will be informed by the teachers and the administrators and you all. And if there are things that we want to adapt or adjust or explore even further, there's always room to grow. This is just our approach for what could be and, you know, clearly other people's input will make it even better and stronger. So just don't think that this is the end-all, be-all, but we are really excited for what the community and what the board thinks of this.
And I think Mr. Steele said it best, this is just a conceptual.
Yes.
Once the nickel passes, it has the ability to alter and change.
Yes, yes, sir.
I do have one comment.
Yes.
And as a native Bath Countyan who has grown up seeing the building as it is now, I think your drawing and your rendering is, is beautiful, but I think it's too much of a departure from what's there now.
Okay.
And that's just, as I, I don't want to be mean and I certainly have no expertise.
You're fine.
But I don't want to compromise the integrity of the history of the building. That's just my viewpoint.
Understood.
I think maybe what Brenda's saying too, I see the same thing. I think we miss the columns in front.
Okay.
Instead of the, like you had the flat
Mm-hmm.
front, I, I think we, I don't know, maybe I'm...
Yeah, it's kind of...
I think we miss the columns
Mm-hmm.
that, that like are there now.
Mm-hmm.
I think the building is beautiful, I just, that one, that flat front is, is not appealing to me either.
Okay.
Well, well, I will always defer the board and the board makes the decisions. I understand what you're saying, but I also would counter that, just as an end of discussion. If you put the same building up that's there now, wh- where's my interest, I guess? I, I wouldn't get excited about buying a, my old T-shirt is starting to fade, so I buy a new T-shirt that looks just like it. I wouldn't get that excited. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see, yeah.
Yeah, but we're talking about building a building that is not falling on students' heads.
Well, I would...
We're building the inside to make it more modern and more structurally sound and, and all of that.
But I, I think as we, again, I will speak out of term, but as we go forward... But as, I think as we, again, I will speak out of term, but as we go forward, especially if the nickel passes, we'd have the lovely opportunity to have several drawings and put it out to the public and let them have their input as we would.
Yeah, and the public would need to have input.
Yes, ma'am.
Maybe they disagree with me. I may be totally out, out in left field, but, you know, we need to see what the community wants.
I take a, a little bit different take on it. Um, I really am tickled with the pictures, excited, they, they've already stirred excitement within me. And, uh, yes, all due respect, I graduated from that building also. So, uh, I do like the columns, but, uh, uh, I realize that sometimes columns have to come down and we have to make a new future, so. Uh, I'm open to lots of ideas for the future and for the future of that building and our kids. But thank you.
So with that, I'll leave, uh, both of these, there are two copies of the same things, but I'll leave you, I'll leave this with you all, and, uh, just let me know if you all need additional prints, and I can find a way to make those happen. My final piece is not an agenda item, but, um, as part of Board Recognition Month, I do have some, um, gifts from my office that I would like to hand out to each of you, and it could happen after or it can happen now, either way.
What is best for you?
Mr. Reeves, I don't need a motion, no, do this.
No, we've already approved it. I just put a motion.
I get one even though I was mean.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item twenty, discussion and possible action to amend the twenty twenty-three twenty-four calendar.
Ms. Liz Watkins will present.
Um, for the amendment of this year's calendar, it was brought to our attention that the calendar had one hundred and eighty-seven contract days in it when it should have had a hundred and eighty-five. So, um, to fix that, um, our suggestion would be to the board, if you would consider letting us make May seventeenth the last day of school this year, and then May twentieth would be a teacher planning day, and May twenty-first would be the closing day for teachers. And that would get our teachers to their one hundred and eighty-five day contract and still keep us where we need to be as far as days for our students as well.
Ms. Brandon Berg, does that work with graduation?
Yes, our understanding is it would move graduation back a weekend, but it gets it out of Memorial Day weekend, which I think is more convenient for everybody.
Last day for students, May nineteenth.
Last day for students will be Friday, May the seventeenth.
May seventeenth.
Mm-hmm. Teachers will come back on Monday for a planning day, and they'll come back on Tuesday for their official closing day.
So I have a mo- um, I'll make that motion to approve that. So I have a motion by Carla to amend the twenty-three twenty-four calendar as presented by Ms. Watkins.
Second.
Second by Eric, any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes. Yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-one, discussion and possible action to approve the twenty-four twenty-five school calendar. Ms. Watkins?
I have a presentation prepared, I just wanted to go through really quickly. Um, I first shared this presentation with the calendar committee, um, then we amended it to share it with the district, and then I changed it one more time to be able to share it with you all, and each time, um, I presented fewer options. Um, so I know that you all are aware that the school calendar committee, um, is required, it's required for us to form each year. I know you all have a copy of these slides as well, um, along with the three calendar options. But this year, our calendar committee, um, members, they're listed there, um, we followed all the protocols, and we created, um, three options for you all to view. We started with six options, and we narrowed it down, and you, um, but I wanted you all to know the school calendar requirements, and the district is required to adopt a calendar that follows either a traditional calendar guideline or a variable calendar guideline. Um, until this year, our, our school has always followed a traditional calendar, but the variable instructional year was made popular during COVID and, or made available rather during COVID, and many districts are kind of going that way, because it allows for a little bit more flexibility with your start date. Traditionally, um, we have done a traditional calendar, we go eight oh five to three fifteen, we have five bank days in our calendar, and we currently go four hundred instructional minutes. Um, the next slide is a traditional versus a variable calendar, and I just wanted you all to see kind of the difference, um, as far as what goes with KDE requirements. But the traditional calendar, which is what we do right now, it requires at least a thousand sixty-two hours of instruction, and those hours have to be delivered on no less than a hundred and seventy days. This year, now that the calendar is amended for the end of the year, we're going to come out with a hundred and seventy-one days. Um, this calendar allows us to bank five days for weather or, um, any reason that we may need school to be closed. Teachers work a one hundred and eighty-five day contract, um, and those are listed there, the one hundred and seventy instructional and opening and closing PD, teacher planning days, and everybody gets that for cred- credit for four holidays. The variable calendar, um, it requires the same one thousand sixty-two hours of instruction, but there is no day limit. So we can do those one thousand sixty-two hours, um, in as many or as few days as we choose. Um, one thousand sixty-two hours is equivalent to a hundred and seventy days. So you'll see the example that I gave there, if we get that in a hundred and sixty days, which we can do without changing our eight oh five to three fifteen time, we, we can do ten fewer days in our calendar, um, than the traditional one seventy that we have been doing. The variable must start on the Monday closest to August the twenty-sixth. Um, there can not be any banked days in this, so we would lose our five banked days. However, we still have the NTI days, um, or traditional snow days that can be made up at the end of the year. The teachers still have one, their one hundred and eighty-five day contract, they still work the same amount of time. As far as the hours go, it just ends up being a little bit different with the number of days that they're actually in our buildings. It's not any less time, it's just some fewer days, the way the time is calculated. So our options, um, the calendar committee selected a first, second, and third choice to be presented to you for final selection and approval. So what you're going to see here, and, and you also have this on a larger slide, um, it's, um, variable calendar, it's a variable calendar, and it was the committee's first choice. So this calendar, um, you'll see it has a hundred instru- one hundred and sixty instructional days delivered on the one thousand sixty-two hours. Um, we have an opening day for staff, they would come on August the twenty-third. I'm sorry, no, yes, yes, August the twenty-third. Their PD days would begin on the nineteenth, they would have one on the twentieth and one on the twenty-first. They also have one on the fourteenth of October, which is a flex PD where our staff are not required to attend. Um, we also have five teacher planning days in there. The first day for students is August the twenty-sixth, the last day for students is May the sixteenth, and our staff would be with us for two planning days and then one, a closing day on May the twenty-first. Our start and end time does not change, but with this option, please notice and remember that there are no banked days, there are only the NTI days available to us, or traditional snow days. In this option, the main difference is the three-day Thanksgiving break, instead of the full week like we had this year. So that was the committee's first choice. If you want to look at the next, we have the committee's second choice. The committee's second choice, um, features a full week of Thanksgiving break. This is the only option, um, you'll see that has that full week of Thanksgiving break. Again, there's no banked days. And to allow for that full week of Thanksgiving break, we had to take the planning day on January sixth and the planning day on April the eighteenth out to allow for that, and to continue keeping that last day of school as May the sixteenth. I think it's important to try to keep that last day of school there if we can. I understand that there, that there could be snow or something like that, but that next week presents a challenge with election day. So we just try to, because, um, like, for example, this year, if we had went with the tradi- um, the original calendar, it would have been Monday, off Tuesday, close Wednesday because of that election day. So we just try to stay out of that week if at all possible. So that's committee choice number two with the full Thanksgiving break. The last option I have was the committee's third choice, and it's a traditional calendar option. Um, the students, the, or the teachers would start their professional development days on the eighth, the ninth, and the twelfth. They would have a planning day on the thirteenth, opening day on the fourteenth, and we would get students on Thursday, the fifteenth. Um, this calendar has a, um, has a three-day Thanksgiving break, and the five banked days are included in here. If you notice, um, the start and end time on this one, we could also take ten minutes off of our day and still be able to bank that time. This is, um, three, this reflects three hundred and ninety instructional minutes. Um, I do want to share with you the results of the, um, district staff vote. So we allowed the staff about a week and a half to get on a Google form and vote for their favorite option. Uh, and you can see there the percentages of what the staff members voted for. Um, most staff members preferred the week-long Thanksgiving break. Sixty-three percent of our staff, sixty-three point six. And just a few pros and cons to remember, the variable calendar allows us to do more on fewer days and not have to change our time any. Um, it allows for more flexibility for our construction. I know we've got construction going on, and we hope to have construction to continue into the future with our middle school. Um, and there are no banked days, so they must be made up, or they have to be NTI days. The traditional calendar allows us for those five banked days that we're used to. Um, there are more days in the calendar for students to be in the building, um, but an earlier start date does mean less flexibility for construction. What questions can I answer for you all?
Uh, I have a couple of questions. Now, what is the current limit on NTI days? Is there a number limit, or is it unlimited, or?
It's ten NTI days currently.
Ten, okay, so up to ten days of non-traditional instruction.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and then after that, it would just be traditional snow days and have to be made up. And the other question, did?
I also want to say, in addition to that, NTI can be used for weather, and it can be used for health closures. Um, but if there was another reason, like a, like a pipe burst or something like that, and we needed to cancel school, we cannot use an NTI day for that.
Okay.
Whereas we can use a banked day for that.
And then the other issue is on these variable calendars, you have starting with students on Monday.
Mm-hmm.
And we traditionally tried to start a two or three-day week for our younger students who have a little harder time getting used to, you know, especially your kindergarten, first grade, and younger students.
Yes, I understand that as well. Um, the, the only thing I will say about that is, is the Monday start, um, it would be tough, but it does allow to go into a three-day weekend.
Yeah, labor.
Because Labor Day falls the next week.
But that's the next week, that's not the whole week they have to come.
Yes.
All right, I just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
Any other questions?
No. I'd like to make the motion to approve the variable calendar committee choice number one.
I second that choice. Any discussion on that? All in favor signify by saying yes, and that is committee choice one, variable calendar.
Okay.
Yes.
So we're going to go with the, the three days of Thanksgiving and the first choice?
Yes. So I had, yes, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries for the, uh, variable calendar committee choice one. Item twenty-two, discussion and possible action to approve Bath County School District Improvement Plan, CDEP and CSEP for all schools.
Each year, the CSEP and the CDEP are required to be, uh, turned in through the state. The board can, Ms. Klein is prepared to present if the board so wants to hear her discuss the CSEP and CDEP, or you can, uh, approve it on your own. But it's an annual, we look at our scores, which we did, we, each school has to make a, a, an improvement plan on what they're going to do to scores and how they're going to get kids to the next level. But, uh, Ms. Klein would be more than happy to discuss it if the board so wants to hear.
Would anyone like to hear Ms. Klein? Are you okay with the?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
Okay.
So I have a motion to approve Bath County School District Improvement Plans from Eric. Have a second?
I second.
Second by Carla, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes to approve Bath County School District Improvement Plan, CSEP and CDEP.
Yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-three, discussion and possible action on purchasing two new Bluebird buses.
As with the CSEP, CDEP, the, uh, two blue, the, the two new Bluebird buses are in the, uh, this year's, uh, budget, but Mr. Detwiler, Director of Transportation, can come forward and answer any questions, if anyone has any.
They are diesel buses?
Pardon?
Yes, they're diesel buses.
Diesel buses?
Yeah.
So we're just approving the buses that are in a lot of for.
Been budgeted.
Yeah, we were coming to budget, so.
They're budgeted, uh, and so it's just the, the request to approve them.
I'll make the motion.
So I have a motion to approve the purchase of two new buses by Eric.
I second.
Second by John. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes to the motion to approve the purchase of two new Bluebird buses.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Motion carries. Item twenty-four, discussion and possible action on approving the twen- twenty twenty-four calendar for the board meetings. Location, date, and time.
As the, the board has just approved the, the committee choice one, their calendar, and in your packet somewhere, Ms. Shaw has also given you every, I think it's the last Monday of the month for you to look at as well, to help make your decisions.
Does, we, because, everything, everybody's okay?
I am.
So.
I make a motion to approve, uh, the proposed meeting schedule as it is.
So I have a motion by Eric to approve the twenty twenty-four board meeting calendar as presented. So I have a motion by Eric to approve the twenty-twenty-four board meeting calendar as presented. In the auditorium. Bath County High School Auditorium, last Monday of each month at seven p.m. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Carla. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? Motion carries. Twenty-five, other business? Do we have anything? Item twenty-six, motion to adjourn. Second by John. Adjourn. Adjourned at eight thirty-one p.m.
Thank you.